All right, now ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna open our meeting. For everybody's verification, this meeting is being recorded. Basically, tonight, we're gonna have the presentation on the 3A, MBTA, Jason.
Sure, I'm speaking my best thing to, um, I, it's not the greatest setup for presentation, but I'm here now tonight with a town planner. I'm just here to provide some of the information about the MBTA community's legislation and the CDC's proposed response to how the town would be, you know, responding to the requests for it to comply. If you have any questions, I would be happy to take them down. If I go like, no, then right off the top of my head, I'm happy to get back to you and click sign in. Also, just just a time to hear the information, there will be a formal public hearing on the zoning amendments next week. This is just to give people another opportunity to hear the information and ask questions. So, um. Um, so a new section 3A of the zoning act was signed into law in January 2021. And in 2022, the state released guidelines for communities outlining those new requirements. The new protocol zoning act requires MBTA communities, including MBTA adjacent communities with no service within their borders, to have at least one zoning district that allows multifamily zoning by right. Can you hold your hand? We are required to have a zoning district of at least 50 acres or multiple districts of five acres each. They could add up to 50 acres and at least one of those actually be 25 acres or more. This district must allow multifamily housing by right. Multifamily is defined as three or more units per structure. The minimum gross density, um, for this district needs to be, um, 15 units to be acre. And the zoning needs to allow capacity of at least 750 multifamily units by right. The focus of the statute is on what the zoning allows, not necessarily what would be built. And there's no requirement for towns to produce the housing associated with this zoning or to provide the infrastructure to serve it. Land needs to be developed all count, as in it cannot be flood plain, water, wetlands, or public land, but it can be land that's been built. Um, the zoning can offer strict age or number of benefits. The districts the CDC has identified for 3A compliance is 101 of 4 lower road. These two properties already have a high concentration of multifamily housing and already have the benefit of by right zoning for the suburbs. This area is the candidate for suitable zoning district, but it would need some changes to the zoning in order to become fully compliant. This includes clarifying our site plan review bylaws, so they are unended years of multifamily zoning is allowed by right and is not subject to the discretion of a special permit. And also by raising the by right number of stories allowed from the current four stories to four and a half stories. The way the new zoning could cause changes to be made to the property after the proposed rezoning would be, one, if the existing developments or portions of those developments were to be taken down and replaced under the new zoning. Two, if additional height were added to existing buildings. Currently, the two sites are a mix of three, four, and five story buildings, but the five story buildings haven't been allowed already to put the areas by the zoning board to be used. In the proposed scenario, all new buildings could be four and a half stories. 60 feet is and would remain the maximum height, just as it is now. Currently, the total number of units permitted on the sites already and under construction is 900 feet. Under the proposed by right zoning, the total estimate of estimate of units would be 812, which is actually less than what's already been permitted. The only way the total lot coverage could be increased would be with redevelopment. The only way the envelopes, the building envelopes could be expanded in any way would be to redevelop or for someone to access the areas. The reasoning for this approach is that the properties are already zoned for multifamily housing as required. This is a response to what the CDC had anticipated would be the greatest concerns about the legislation. This proposal does not identify a new area of town in which to introduce new housing. It's a conservative approach that anticipates the smallest possible impact. Some towns have used these new 3A rules as an opportunity to create new housing districts or go beyond what the state is requiring for to introduce affordability minimums where none are currently required. And if there is an interest in this, my recommendation would be first to meet what the state is requiring us to do and then potentially revisit that effort to change and stay under heads to the districts. But as of now, the CDC is not proposing doing anything more than what's been here. There are two basic changes that, uh, to the zoning, to the district zoning, um, that would need to be made in order to achieve compliance. The first is to clarify that our site plan review bylaws are like a special permit procedurally, but they do not require an actual special permit or any discretionary use permit. Town council has clarified for us that while the site plan review process was treated as special permit for years, it is not in fact a true special permit because there is no discretion allowed by to anywhere to determine the use. It's already determined in the zoning. We have been provided language by town council to clarify this provision in our bylaws. And the actual procedure for site plan review remains exactly the same. The other bylaw change needed is to make four and a half stories allowed by right rather than four stories. And the maximum height allowed, as I mentioned, is 60 feet. And it would not change. But the change in allowing an additional half story by right would be needed because at a four story threshold, the calculated total unit capacity that the state asks us to estimate would fall under the required 750 units that we have demonstrated. It's really they asked us to demonstrate that 750 units could be, should be done by right and their formulas brought the current number of stories just, just under. So we had to just, we would have to raise it just a little bit. Currently, four of the buildings, as I mentioned, on the site are permitted for five stories for various that would change.
Thank you. Um, very quick explanation, about four and a half stories.
Oh, sure. So I have a story. Some towns have specific definitions of this, so basically it would be a sloped roof without the floors. So the, the assumption would be, you know, the top floor of the building that was built with a small living space and the other stories that allow approximately half of what it would allow. So you might see, um, like an attic style space.
Yeah, dormers and cell blocks.
Um, okay, so status compliance. Oh, sorry, a couple people are waiting, so. Um, to date, we have completed the state's required compliance model, um, to demonstrate compliance of the proposed zoning district. This compliance model was a spreadsheet where we were asked to put in all of our inputs, all the various things that our zoning required, um, and called for. And it slipped out a number and tells us whether or not we would be compliant with the proposed district. We have drafted our zoning by law amendments, um, which have been reviewed by town council and submitted for inclusion in the June warrant. We have submitted, um, the compliance model and draft zoning bylaws to the executive office of, uh, housing and civil and communities and the state overseeing this process. And we've given our zoning by law amendments to the attorney general's office for a draft advisory review. We have received feedback from both offices that, um, minor edits were needed for full compliance, but those have been made and adjusted appropriately with a warrant. So we would anticipate that they would be acceptable as, as it's been submitted for the warrant. And we believe that this kind of no substantial changes to that draft bylaw for this district would be needed in order to. Our next steps would be to require a public hearing next week for the zoning change. It's been scheduled and advertised for May 21st at 8:00 PM. Um, in this room, I want to. The zoning articles have been submitted for the coming June town meeting. The select board and planning committee have both voted to recommend the articles to town meeting, um, with their recommendations to be printed in the warrant. The CDC voted on April 9th to support the articles and submit them for inclusion in the warrant. And if the town meeting rolled into June as possible, we would then submit all of our materials to the state and officially apply for compliance of this district. This must be done by the end of December of this year to meet the compliance requirement. But our goal would have the compliance would be to have the compliance confirmed months before we got to the deadlines, so we didn't want to say anything. A major consequence of not complying with the, with the new statute would be becoming ineligible for a number of state grant programs. That would include, um, grant programs like MassWorks, which the town has relied on and expects to continue to rely on for a number of infrastructure projects. Housing Choice, which we just recently became eligible for, um, so grant program that, um, provides infrastructure, um, help with another, other financial assistance and then numerous other state grants that we would expect to not be eligible for, um, if we don't manage to pass. And that includes the local capital project funds, which provides housing farms with a proportion of their funding. Compliance status would be expected to come into decisions about other bigger state grant programs. And also the attorney general's office did release an advisory, um, in March of 2023, just clarifying that, um, the legislation is in the manding and communities don't have the choice not to comply simply for the state funds. So I guess it's been seen in recent communities, um, if we didn't comply, but they expect the state to start taking some action against us as well as, um, limiting our grant access in a way. This was just the, from the advisory that we were sent, um, last year. And then just to give you a sense of the service area, the regretting for its not having the benefit of having a station within our borders, um, still is asked to comply because we are adjacent to community that do. So, oh, just a second. Just waiting. So that is, um, my presentation of the information and the work the CDC has done to date in order to, um, respond to, um, the state's requirements. If there are questions or any other type of, you know, if there's anything that you want to ask for more information or anything that you'd like to share, um, this is the, this is a forum for you.
Okay, if you have any questions, please, our questions go through the chair, speaking and address. And before you ask a question, but. Well, generally, this, uh, we, um, we kind of left out of the way, you know, we had an area that was pretty much met the law requirements already. And it was Daniel did a great job putting it all together, getting all the parameters figured out, returning it into a report and going to the state. So I think we had what's would be considered a preliminary of moving.
We're in compliance right now because what we've done is we have.
We've helped the time frame.
Right, we're meeting our time frames and we have submitted information to the state as we've been asked to. Our next milestone would be to, um, take the warrant articles, pass the town meeting that would, um, help us in our next step of achieving the full compliance.
So, so we'll be looking to get that zoning passed so that we, so that we are in compliance. We, um. Because we have almost a ready-made situation yet, it allows us to, uh, to comply with this. There's a town, some of the towns that haven't complied have already begun to get penalties against those grants. It seems one of the last ones, it's one of those grants where they're just not to need a bridge there. I think there's so much they would look like they'll.
Got this year and right behind us, so it took it something up a little bit.
Turn that off, maybe it's, yeah, we only missed the presentation so far.
I don't think I really will be.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Very common. So anyway, uh, so what I'm saying is that because we had that area over there, um, that we could use that already met most of the criteria, it was already multifamily, it's already, um, built up, built, almost built up. The, uh, changes that, that, that we make in the zoning will allow some expansion, but not a lot. So it's not really going to, so it's not really affect us like it did those communities that don't have, um, the availability of a piece of property like that with everything already built on it. So it's kind of, uh, it's kind of, it's kind of lucky on that part that we can do this, that we can meet this criteria. And said that, it's not, you know, you wonder how the, about what the, uh, what the state's final plans are, what would happen, what happens for the towns that don't, I can't read this, uh, criteria or something.
Which probably, uh, on my overall schedule, we're talking, is it, like, there's Martin's Landing here and there's some of the others?
Yeah, it's Martin's Landing and, yeah.
And that's it?
Okay.
Edwood, yeah.
Excuse me, I, I don't know who you are.
Chobin Allen.
I'm sorry. Thanks, Bill. I'm sorry.
Yeah, because, because even though Edwood is, there is a sunset problem, Edwood, but but even afterwards, it will still continue to be, you know, depending upon whether or not we can get it to continue to be part of our affordable housing enough, we'd like to do one, know what to, uh, when we begin to sue that with Lincoln Properties. But, um, even afterwards, though, it still will exist, as you still exist as a property with multifamily in it. And, um, and Martin's Landing will also, so. Again, unlikely, it's unlikely, I think, at least at this point, that they would tear any one of those buildings down in order to build another one that has to an extra floor of a couple of parking lots in it. So, so we're relatively safe with this. Anyway, you both have any one of these files? Jack, when you did?
So, if you're.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to take this opportunity, Jeff, you were for 27th, actually. Just wanted to take this opportunity to invite the CPC to the North Reading of the County Town Committee MBTA 3A, um, for that we're going to have at Kitty's on May 22nd. And we're looking at some special guests to come in and talk to the issue. And so I guess it's basically another side of the perspective and viewpoint, uh, to, uh, in entire idea program in MBTA, uh, uh, presentations. So that's, that's what we do. It's that, again, it's May 22nd, 7 o'clock at Kitty's. And, uh, all right, to that, if you want to communicate with the community, kind of feel that also if you get that perspective from us as well, then, um, a lot of people, then that'd be great. I'm trying to limit it to just North Reading people. Uh, but it's probably, you know, that's, uh, you know, other people might attend, but that, uh, I don't have any control of it. And I'll reach out to the, uh, select board, uh, to go to their next meeting. And it's like you guys, it's why I want to keep you out, I want it, it's an inclusive thing. So, uh, I just want you to, you know, okay.
So, um, so one thing that sticks out in my mind, and I kind of been very skeptical about this, and I was going to share a thought with you. When we talk about the select board deciding, they vote 5-0 and then the CPC voted 4-0 that night in favor of.
4-0.
Yeah, and one thing, 4-0?
4-1.
Oh, 4-1. Oh, I'm sorry. So anyway, I think what you have to understand is that was just move the warrant out forward. That wasn't, that's, that was designed to push information into the community. So that's why that vote was so heavy in that one direction, because that's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to convey information and get it out to you. So of course we would vote for that. Did we actually vote whether we're in favor or not of this? No, we didn't. So that's still to be seen as well. So just to inform you and let you know that, that that's kind of where we're at in process. It really is up for the people to decide, but it was just a push a warrant forward and our intention was to get the information to know, if that makes sense. Okay, I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
Point, point, though, we have members of the select board here, but wasn't the, the role call you did to, uh, to add in affordability, it wasn't actually to prove it? I thought that was the role call that you did, is you, you wanted to see affordability added to the, that's what I felt, didn't you bring that up?
No.
That's what the meeting.
Our, our vote was to put it on the town warrant.
Okay.
Yes, right, maybe.
And, yeah.
Okay. We might want to check the meeting minutes that we just received today, um, states.
See, there are two meetings. So we have the joint meeting where there was discussion, but the actual recommendation, I think, was not voted by either board that night, but then I think the select board had stopped to put meeting where the recommendations were actually voted, but that was separate from those.
Jeff, you referenced that joint meeting, I thought, um, did you, did you know that?
That's what I was talking about.
Yeah, yeah, because I was just saying this, at that meeting.
Oh, at the joint meeting?
At the joint meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, okay.
The role was to add in the affordability, uh, which we're, we're not doing, but I mean, that's, that was that, but here, I'm just clarifying.
We already had a time.
Yeah, then separately, we voted, yeah, and I, I think just for me, sorry, Jeff. Okay, you made one, man. I was just gonna say, I, I, I've struggled with this and if anyone that, uh, you know, watched, attended, whatever, the joint meeting, I, I tried to outline a lot of, lot more background that really isn't in the presentation here or whatever of, of this, of this act. It's kind of late, it's, it's, it's been there since the 60s, um, where it all started and it's just kind of laid dormant for almost 60 years. And then, you know, January 2021 just went and kicked in the gear and said, hey, get all these communities that are MBTA, we're gonna come up with a new thing that we can make them do. And that's my only concern about this is it's a fealty kind of plague here because if you just look at the logic, why, if we completely comply and we don't have to do one thing, then why, why would the state, you know, still have us? It's a fealty thing. They want us to bend the knee and do this, um, because again, there's zero benefit there. You've seen the presentation, you know, we actually have more units than they want. So why are they doing this? Like, I think anyone logical would ask that question, why are they doing this? And I think Warren alluded to it. I think they're in the razor business and they're selling us, you know, giving us the handles and they want to sell razors and the razors are housing units and they're gonna be pushing that on us. So when we do this and we said, this, why, it's a no brainer. And I'm in that camp, I have to admit, you know, I voted for it to put it to town meeting, but, you know, and we're being, if you will, risk averse on the legal side, but we are, once we vote for this, then we're doing it to ourselves because the state can't make us change our zoning themselves. They have to have the towns do it. The towns need to change their zoning on their own because of the whole rule act. So we're going to town meeting in June to basically put ourselves out there and that we're on board with it. We don't know really what we're on board for because we, this one's easy. I think Daniel's done a good job, there's, this one's easy, but what's the next thing they're gonna ask for? I've got this, I've got all these communities that just signed up. That means, you know, next year, here comes the next round, you know, and that's what I'm afraid of. And I, I, I honestly think the select board, if you deep, deep down, you have to have the same worry, but logically we get it. We don't want to get sued and all this stuff, but I'm concerned, I don't know what the next hammer, the next thing the hammer's gonna drop on. And that's, that's not fun because we're volunteers elected and I, I'm nervous about wanting to approve this. I wish I had more assurances from the state that they're not gonna do anything. And what we've seen in the last year is a more punitive stance by the state. It started off, this law just said, you need to be half mile from a train station or a T station. Well, we weren't half mile. Oh, but, you know, you get something, right? Yeah, we'll put something together for you. Okay, that's great, you can comply. Other state, other towns, I'm sorry, that, that didn't comply, oh, we don't like that. So they, you know, they sued or they started to add things. So it started out with three discretionary things and now it's at 17, you know? So they added one more right away in May of '23 and then they followed up and added another, so you get to 17 discretionary amounts. Well, we've only gotten, out of all the 17, North Reading, in the last 12 years too, MassWorks, that's the only thing we've gotten. We got a 3 million one in 2017, officially 2017, we got it in '18. And that was for to extend the water line for Martin's Landing. Basically, that was to do that kind of upgrades to allow us to develop Martin's Landing. And then we got two $100,000 grants from MassWorks in '21 and '22 for the design of the sewer, uh, proposed sewer system. You know, that works out over that 12 years to like $17 a household, you know? I mean, it's nothing. So everyone's 3.2, 3, we lost 3.2, it's $17 is what that came out to. Do you want your autonomy or do you wanna get the 3.2 million dollars? A lot of people are gonna say I want the 3.2 million dollars and I respect that, but that's what worries me. Everyone's getting scared about these discretionary things when we're not actually getting any of them. And the one that Warren talks about for, for, uh, the culvert or whatever, it's not guaranteed. And if anything, what we're seeing in the state, they're cutting back all the grants. So once again, I just worry about what's next, you know? That's all I have to say.
Steve, you have a comment? You have a comment?
Uh, I, I just, I couldn't, I agree more with you, Mr. Allah. I voted, I was the one who didn't vote to put it on the town warrant. And honestly, it's because I knew what was going on in town warrant. Anyway, it was kind of a principle vote because I, I do think it's overreach, but we did get lucky, as, as Warren said, we did get lucky. We had this, um, property and Daniel didn't really jump with that. And so we're kind of skating, but I don't trust it. You know, I, I feel bad for the towns that can't skate, um, and are gonna get punished for not complying. So, and I don't trust what will happen down in the future. I mean, that zoning changes, do they say we're gonna throw another building, two more buildings or, you know, who knows? I just don't trust it. So, yes, feel like we probably should vote for this because we are skating and we don't want to get sued, we don't do well with them. So, um, but just by principle, it was my, was my no vote.
I think that probably one of the key points of this all thing was the fact that we can meet this requirements. I won't say it was really easy, it was a lot of work on her part, yes, no question about it. But, um, now, because we can do it without really any pain.
Right.
Uh, it seems like something that we could do. Because it occurs to me that it's for some reason, enough of the towns objected and it got repealed. I, I, there's no harm, no foul on us because we really wouldn't have, um, we wouldn't have gotten involved, so we wouldn't have had to do it again.
Yeah, there are some lawsuits now, but you're right, I mean, it, it's, so it's not really settled law when there's now a lot of legal work, you know, going on, but, but at the same rate, you know, there's not a lot of times. But I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm interested, there's a small group here and I don't know all of you, I know some of you. I, I would really enjoy if any of you just want to stand up and I know what it's like to stand up, but I don't like folks speaking, but I'd love your opinion. You've come out here and even the people online, if you just wanna state your name, just give me your opinion. I, I wanna hear from people. One of the reasons why I voted to move this forward is because I wanna let the town vote on this, not five people on the planning board. It's, I respect people in the town to make the right decision.
Yeah, I'll take Jeff's.
Yeah, thank you, Warren. And I agree with, um, with that. But one thing I think is interesting is that, and I've spoken about this before, we have a deadline that we have to meet the state requirements to meet this deadline, but because it's unsettled law, I think that if you sign onto something too prematurely, sometimes that can, uh, that that won't benefit you. So I kind of like, I'm weighing this, the, taking this and weighing this out. So when I look at this and, um, I look at the other towns, like I think now North Andover was voting tonight, I, um, I know Raleigh voted, I think last night, Raleigh voted against it, or, yeah, Marblehead voted against it. Like, so you're finding all these towns now starting to really to unbundle this thing and they're really starting to understand it. And that's why we're here and that's what we're doing. Because ultimately, yes, Dave, I agree, if, if we get a little bit of a, an idea of how the audience feels. My biggest thing was maybe we should just kind of wait this out a little bit and just be patient with it. Because when you have unsettled law, why would you jump in on something and lose your autonomy and losing your rights to, to actually zone on your own, through your own committees and boards and select and et cetera? Why would you give that, why would you forfeit that if in the end, you, you ultimately, you know, there may be like a golden nugget at the end of that, um, through, through the courts? So that's just my opinion on how I feel about this. I think time is probably, I know we have a timeline to, to answer this statement, but sit a little bit longer, watch what other towns are doing, be more involved in informational meetings. There's a lot of stuff going on out there right now, there's a ton of stuff. There's Zoom meetings all over the place. Um, and there are meetings in town halls, all just. Um, and there are meetings in town halls, all just, you can pick up any, Google anything, you'll find something somewhere. Um, and you should attend those, because the information that's coming out is important, we have to really look at, you know, the town, North Reading's been zoning their own stuff for a very long time, and I think they do a pretty good job at what goes on, and, you know, the state's coming in and saying, well, you know what, we got an idea. Well, you know, that's for the people to figure out whether they think that idea is, is good or not, so again, thank you, Chair, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there.
That's okay. Steve?
Yes, Chairman, yeah, I, I'm gonna go back to the Andover, we even had Steve, he did a great job negotiating that, um, and I, I recall being on there, and it was a two to two vote at one point, and it came my, my turn. To vote, and, and the thought process I had, well, should we continue with negotiating with Andover, or should we go right to the MWRA? And we didn't have to make the decision that night, but had, we'd be thinking MWRA one, okay? But I felt that you don't cross a bridge until you get there. All right, and I think we're in the same place here, you have January thirty first that we have to make our decision by, December. Because, I'm at, I'm sorry, December thirty first, right, you have November meeting to deal with this, okay, you can do it then, you don't have to do it at the June meeting, we're still gathering facts.
The October town meeting is, is, would be our only other opportunity.
I'm sorry?
The October, if we didn't put it on June town meeting, October town meeting would be our, our only other opportunity before December thirty first.
October, right, yeah, that's what I'm saying, October, the, the October meeting, yeah, okay, I mean, at that point, you know, we'll have more information, the public will be more knowledgeable on the issues, the desire for what is real, what isn't real, what they're really giving up, uh, and so on, uh, and what, and what, what the town is gaining by. Okay, so, uh, doing it, rushing it to June, and then giving up your, um, sovereignty, okay? Uh, on your whole rule, uh, so quickly, then, and then Milton wins their case, and that's another thing that's, that's out there, all right, uh, so there's a lot going on rather than pushing it in, in June before we have to, then, then set at least uh, way to the October town meeting, and then maybe a special town meeting in December, I mean, whatever the case might be, we have to do what we have to do for what is best for the community. And the only way to do that is to get a complete consensus of facts and what people feel about the facts, all right, just, I'm sure that.
Mr. Chairman, too, I think, thank you, Jeff, and I think, uh, this has, this really has something for both sides, so the, the side that is for local rule, there's an argument there, Jeff made it well, the other side is people that want more housing, more affordable housing. I would ask them that are pushing this, are you getting that? No, this isn't doing that, so no one should be really happy with this whole proposal, you know, whether you're, what side, whatever side you're on, because this one's not getting you that. All this exists already, so not one housing unit is, is being produced, and really, you know, again, the, the, the original language was not to do production, but to do planning, but even that said, like, what's gonna be produced out of that is, we've just covered, it's very rare that they're gonna knock them down, and these are especially Martin's Landing, Martin's Landing, they're brand new structures, so it's not producing anything, so if you're a person that's on that other side, you're not getting anything out of this, and if you're a person on the, you know, stay out of my business, government, you know, state, whatever, um, you're not happy either, so I, I'm looking at it for both sides, and, and I can see the argument from whatever side you're on.
Well, there is a, there's a, there's two things about this too, though, there are plenty, there are a lot of towns that, um, well, I, I was surprised to hear about that Raleigh voted down, because they were following one of the meetings of, of, of housing over the years, uh, so, uh.
So what you're saying is maybe there are, you've taken the initiative, they have a plan for housing, and they just don't need the state telling them where, what?
Yeah.
You know, yeah, and, and again, I think every town is different, and you have the towns that are, are left with the decision of voting against it right now, because we don't have, we, they say, I don't have the, we don't have the parcels, we don't have the capacity to do this, so they vote, we're, we're just in a position where we can vote yes, but it's not a good feeling, but, but I get, we're in a great.
There's another, there's another side to this too, that is, the fact that, um, you know, we're losing people, we're losing, you know, families, because we can't, we don't have any affordable housing for them, that's we don't have any, uh, we can't provide them without it.
Really? So, newest member?
We, we.
Congratulations, Max, thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Good to see you, Warren.
Good to see you, Max. Um, so, we're, sometimes in the skies, a big guy.
Thanks, Warren.
Um, so, so there are the time to have the land and, and, and zone it, but the state's looking ahead, they're trying to if you put yourself in that position, what would you do better, what would you do differently? They're all they want to do is create zone areas so that a opportunity comes along for some building to happen. If development walks into a site that is already permitted by right, the multiple families, far more, he's already halfway down the road, because any, any developer, okay, the permitting and all the paperwork goes with this, is about half a job, so, um, uh, there is something to be said for the way they go on about this, but the other thing is, do we have any kind of a moral, uh, uh, you know, obligation to, to, uh, try to help provide housing, and in this state, housing is, is ridiculous, the cost of it, yeah, the lack of it, um, so what do we do? See, I think there's another side to look at.
Well, I mean, if you're, what you're saying then is, we, what we're proposing or the state is rubbish then? Because if we have a moral obligation to provide more housing, we're not doing it.
Okay, well, I understand, I, I, I agree, and we, we are not gonna be as productive as some of the other, and, and we've kind of taken advantage of the situation that we have with, uh, with that Jordan Martin Land, Martin's Landing, being able to fulfill, but we, this was a defense thing that we did, but this is to defend ourselves against what we thought was an.
Yeah, but the state, you still needed to accept it, the state could have said, no, no, we actually want like the other towns, why do they draw the drawland?
There was a little caveat in, in our, in our judicial approval, if you will, that said they would prefer that we used, that we found some open space and created new housing, so they didn't push it, as far as I know, right, they just kind of left it like that, but they did make that comment in their response, so, uh, so I, I think they, I think they, this was, whether it was ill-conceived or not, I think this was, uh, a, a plan that they sat down and put together to try to encourage family, multiple family housing across the state. I mean, and how would you do it? They can't just, they didn't want to just sit there and watch people just live on the streets, you know?
Yeah, just don't, I don't understand, though, how you can have one community where you really, you know, by, you're imposing this, you're hurting them, in some manner, you know, putting stress on the taxes, extra police, fire, whatever, and then us, they're just letting us off the boat. Yeah, I think they're looking for fealty, that, that's what they're looking for.
One of the towns that I know about, um, is that they the area that they, uh, picked, that they're gonna pick, because they do have a train service, uh, it's all single, it's all big, single-family homes, and the people are just like, what does that mean? They, they think that the state's gonna, gonna tear their houses down, and put a multiple family's way, which is what you're all taking to happen. They couldn't say, okay, gotta do it, so get rid of some of these songs, buy them, do whatever.
So I think that, I think that's really the question, so what's the state's intent?
Right, right.
Right, what's their intent? So if they're not forthcoming, and they're not laying this out, why should we swallow that, why should we accept that? That's just my feeling.
And to your point, then, if that's all they want to do, hey, we're not telling you to knock down your houses, we're not gonna do that, we just wanna get some land zoned in, why are they adding seventeen punitive discretionary?
Right, so, so basically.
The law does not say too that we're gonna sue you, if you look at the original text of the laws, it says, if you don't do this, you'll lose these three discretionary things.
Yeah.
And first off, we don't even comply with the language of the law as it is, but in a way, these are, these are what you lose, and since then, they've added on the additional fourteen, so it, it's, I think they are, actions do speak louder, you know, and that's, that's, that's what they're telling everyone.
So, yes, sir.
This isn't the last.
Did you want to say your name?
You vote Wyver.
Thank you.
Uh, you're in the more training, um, I, it's kind of obvious to me, at least, uh, this is not the last word going to have on the state on this, but this is a, uh, they planted their flag, and this is what they want, and then the next time, uh, they will be a little more restrictive to towns and cities, and a little, uh, less, uh, cooperative, shall we say.
That's a possibility, they deny it, but I've spoken to the governor for um, our state rep as well, and, and our state senator, a little bit about this, and, um, I don't want to speak to them, but they're, but they're indicating to me that they were not happy with this at all, so, uh, but they, uh, this was not something that they saw as the best idea.
But somebody was happy with it when the initial, um, vote came off, came through.
Well, you know, again, again, I'll be really just middle of the end, but I just, but if you, if you come sit down in their chair and say, how can I fix this housing problem? It's a crisis, it's a real crisis. You know, it's, we, and we live in a town where we don't even see that crisis, I mean, we don't see the, the issues, because we're pretty well, pretty well off. I mean, at the transportation committee that I'm on, you know, they, they did a survey, and they were trying to find out what we needed for vehicles to transport people who couldn't afford to do their own transportation, or were elders and needed to go to doctor's places. And, but as a result of that, eighty-nine percent of the people in this town don't care about transportation, they do, they drive their cars, they just don't care. So there's, there's, um, um, we have that, uh, ability to be, to be that well off, so we don't see it, but there does exist in other towns and other places that, 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 uh, housing crisis, and so if you put yourself in that position, what would you do? I think this was, uh, again, it may not have been the, the most, uh, well-wrapped in situation, but it was an attempt to do something, and perhaps they will bend it to some point, yeah.
I was gonna say something else, and I'll get to that, but I respectfully disagree with what you just said, um, just being on the transportation committee that was formed in town, there, this is a tough town if you don't have a car to live in.
Well, that was.
There's a lot of elder people that, yeah, I mean, you were saying we don't feel it, but we do feel it. Um, we do feel it, there's a lot of people that can't get transportation, and the MBTA has not helped us
No.
at all, but, you know, then they wanna come and tell us how to zone our town, but they won't even give us the ride or a bus or anything, so it's a little frustrating, you know, is that it?
Uh, one of the things that was in trouble, that guy from MACC came to, and did a, a little talk to us, uh, to the transportation committee about about his recommendations, and I thought, and he thought that, uh, it, it would make no sense whatsoever to have a regular, to a regional transit authority that would run you know, through town on a regular, scheduled basis, then we get no use, there'd be nobody in it half the time, maybe one person at a time. So, uh, you know, rides, uh, calls for rides, rides on demand, that's what this town needs, and that's what we have now, we just got a new van, and, um, and they added that to our place, and we have some pretty good vehicles now, a lot of volunteers, and some good people that we pay to drive, so we're able to provide pretty steady support for the elders in the town right now, with the transportation committee, they've done a lot of, so, so, um, so you're correct, that, this is really, this is really what we're, what we need. So that's what we have right now, but you go other places, you don't, they just don't have that, you know? So.
I did also wanna ask you, um, when you say buy right, the builder, buy right.
Yeah.
Does that mean now that we voted, that, you know, we're handing over our zoning to the state and that area, a developer comes in, say, let's just they tear down a building, a developer comes in, does he now not have to conform to our cap, he can build anything he wants, or achieve?
No, Daniel, you want to just?
Oh, sure, so the buy right something really means we don't need discretionary special permit to, you don't need special permit. So actually, currently, both those properties are already zoned out, right, the only proposed changes have to do with dimensions. Doesn't have to do with the, so the use is already buy right, so just buy right as a right just means you don't need an additional discretionary special use permit in addition to the site plan, still to do site plan, everybody's still.
So it still has to stay of minimum height?
Uh, absolutely, it's still subject to zoning.
Yeah.
Zoning is still proposed to be tweaked in terms of dimensions, but the use allowed isn't even touch.
I thought that, you know, uh, originally, we were hoping that whole project over there would be commercial, so we would do it.
Right, yeah.
And slowly but surely, we gave up all those rights, and, and agreed to housing, and agreed to housing, and agreed to housing, now that's what we got over there. So, um, um.
I believe too, that site plan review is still, we still would have a site plan review, um, but it's, it's limited to, uh, vehicle access, uh.
Yeah, right.
Architectural design, circulation, all those kind of utilities.
Yeah. So, Warren, I, I just looked up on the definition again, as of, as of right, this is the, off mass, off go. Uh, means, uh, as of right means development that may proceed under zoning ordinances or bylaw without the need for special permit, the need for variance, the need for zoning amendment, waiver, or any other discretionary zoning approval. That's their definition.
Well, again. So they can build whatever they want?
No, it's exactly what I, it's the same thing.
Sounds a bit different, which is really.
No, it, it, it means that the zoning doesn't require you to get a variance or a special use permit, the use is already allowed. It still goes through site plan review, but that's what I said in my, Mr. Griffin said that it's the same.
And, uh, the things that the site plan review would do, things like traffic, and, um, and again, utilities, public buildings, things like that, where we go, I enter, exit, twice, those items, um, are, and, and, you know, and to some extent, landscaping, so on the, on the, part of the, of part of the property that would ultimately help the responsibility of the, the, uh, community.
In, in the architectural design of the building.
Yeah.
Screening, yeah.
Yeah.
There's something to be.
But we, we, uh, as, as the town, as a board, we try to keep bringing in, you know, a little more for the housing, we can get one here, one there, but there's no way we can keep up with, with the demand, even in this town, so. Any other comments or questions?
I have a question, Chair, with, with, how many bedrooms would each should have?
Well, we just have to. No, I'm, I'm bedroom, so we just, like, physical, you know, there's the allowance for fifteen units per acre, um, and that's units, so, and then in those units, you know, physically, you can only, so many bedrooms, um.
Yeah, so our, so none of our zoning consists of number of bedrooms, so it's, it's really just dimensional requirements, um.
I'm just wondering, seven hundred and fifty units, you've got four or five people in each unit, that's gonna bring a lot of people, the town, and they're gonna need the school and.
They're already there. For us, the town is there, but if you're talking about another community, yeah, if you have a community that doesn't have, doesn't have any of this, and they have that fifty acres, and then, then, yeah, they, yeah, they gotta get, if they built that out, it'd be quite an impact right there.
Yeah, right now, right now.
We don't have a problem, because we're already built out, well, not completely built out, but majority built out.
As you know, so Martin's Landing, Martin's Landing is fifty-five, a little bit, but in Edgewood, there is seventeen place, uh, school students coming out of Edgewood, out of four hundred and six, you know, you know how many apartments?
Oh, okay.
How many apartments, man?
Uh, four oh six.
Four oh six, so out of four oh six, there's seventeen students.
I knew it was a six.
Is Martin landing, is, are those condos?
Yes, yeah, did I say apartments?
No, I'm just thinking that the state wants us to have apartments for marginalized people, if you look at their little video they put out, they want three marginalized people to the suburbs, in turn, the suburbs actually urban, um, in my opinion, which we don't like, because we like the small-town feel, we lived in while they've been here to be in suburbia. So I'm just wondering, are they going to make you somehow get apartments or something for, to comply with seven hundred and fifty units for, you know, marginalized?
I, I do think, if I can answer, I do think apartments is more, you know, what they're pursuing, because the the AMI for ownership, say, they're doing affordable condos or home, you know, it's just, I don't think that's workable. So it is apartments that they're looking for, but I think in case of Martin's Landing, there's no there's, there's no jeopardy of losing what you all have, you know, with your condos, but.
Those condos are expensive.
Yes, yes. Yeah, they're beautiful, so, uh.
I think too, when it comes to Martin's Landing, you have two buildings that are not even built yet.
Built yet, you know.
So like it kind of leaves like, and not, we don't know really, but it does kind of leave a vague opening for those remaining two buildings. And not that I think anything would happen there, but, but you, I mean, we're talking about the state, you don't really know and we have no guarantee. So those two buildings that are there, if I was an owner of, in those condos, it's beautiful, they're seven hundred dollars or more. You know, I would be pretty concerned about even the undeveloped area that still exists there that has not been developed. That's always going to be, in, you know, my thought process, Mary is that, well, what if, like, we don't know, we don't have a guarantee at all.
That is fair, that's probably the biggest risk is what's not been built yet.
Right, yes.
But again, what, what, what is that risk? Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I wouldn't even find out at this point, uh, you know, who the, what is the master plan someplace or if we just wing it it right now.
Well, I mean, you don't have to look at what happened on Friday in Norfolk, they just announced they're gonna take over the state hospital, they have a former state hospital and make it. Uh, apartments or whatever for, um, recent immigrants and with no, not even a phone call to anyone in, in Norfolk. And they've done this before at hotels, whatever, they're just dropping off forty people and they don't even let the town know, which the town, again, if they're small enough, we could. Come up with a plan, how do we get these people in school, put, put some action together, they don't even, they just wait, they do it and then you have to just react. And I think the only thing that we're, we're blessed in North River, we don't have a state property any longer like this. Um, people in Martin's Landing are sitting on it right now, but if we did, you can bet it's bottom dollar. Uh, in our select board, we would have to be, you know, by the phone, waiting for that phone call, because it, at some point, it would, it would get taken over and that's what's happening just across the state. Is that the housing crisis? And that's what I ask myself. And I'm a compassionate person, but is the housing crisis, you know. The actual Massachusetts residents, seniors that really need this housing, I, I want to think that is the answer, but all we're seeing again, actions speak louder than words. Back to that whole point with the punitive stuff they're doing on this and actually what the state, the, the governor is doing. They're not cooperating with towns and communities, they're forcing this stuff on these towns that have no capacity. Norfolk's got five thousand residents and they're dumping all these people into their system with no plan. Think about what we're doing in four weeks, we're looking for an override for our school. We have the best schools in the state, if not the country, and, and we can't afford, you know, we have to have an override. I think, but if you just, if we dumped a hundred people on this town and said, you deal with it, and it's just, it's unbelievable. And we have fifteen, sixteen thousand people, three times what Norfolk has, uh, my heart goes out to these different towns, that they don't have a plan, you know? It's, it's not fair to them and, uh, and they're not, it, it's, it's not for seniors and veterans and people. There's no plan for them and that's what really irks me. There's no plan for people that have been here their whole life, paid into the system, worked, been in the military. Retired, they're working off fixed income that never goes up while they're giving out all this kind of benefits to other people that just arrived. It doesn't seem just, that's all I'm gonna say. And, and if anyone thinks too, this is a weird segue, these two are very joined together. These two subjects, you cannot separate these two subjects.
My understanding, I, I, and I don't, I did listen to a, a report at one point, um, where they came up with all the percentages. Of, uh, and, and they didn't seem to think that, uh, at that point, that the number of people that were, that, uh, that were immigrants that were coming in. Had any more than a three percent impact on the, on the, on the black population, which was actually black housing just for the general people.
And that could be the case. I mean, and also the stats are, we're losing about eight thousand residents a year in, in Massachusetts. We're one of the, the states that are losing population, so losing eight thousand people a year net, but we have a housing crisis. Okay, you know, I'm still, my mind's open to that and your argument, I, I'd like to see the numbers, but it, I think it's we're, we're, we're lacking affordable housing. For seniors or whatever, I mean, our town is too expensive to live in, you know.
Lacking affordable housing for our kids.
Yeah, because their kids can't afford houses now.
They gotta go to self-help.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree, so I'm a hundred percent on the affordable aspect of it, I'm not sure as much about the units as much, you know, um. But I'm, I'm not the expert in that area, so.
Well, we're just trying to muddle our way through this and see when we can make the best decision possible.
Yeah, that's why I really appreciate anyone that get here online, if you want to speak up, I, I really, I'm just one person living in this town that'd love to hear what other people think. Um, just to volunteer, trying to make, trying to do the best I can.
One thing before that point is made, and if any of you do want to share that, that's great. I think anybody that I've shared this with or whatever in groups of people, I think the general, what I'm getting back, the feedback I'm getting back, the general. Survey says that the town isn't interested in, we have a lot going on, you know, we do, we have a lot of decisions to make. Financial repercussions and whatever, however, you know, or whatever we decide collectively. I think this is just one more thing that is thrown into the fire, that, you know, people right now are just a little bit overwhelmed. With what's going on, um, in the town financially and, and that one other aspect is it's just a lot to absorb. It's a lot to take in and, and most people are telling me, I just want to keep the town the way it is. That's all they're saying. They just came here, like, I don't, I forget who said it. Mary, was it you, Mary, you said it? Okay, yeah, and that's still the same. People just generally feel that way. They want to keep the footprint, they want to keep the town the way it is. That's the feedback I keep getting over and over, like a broken record. And again, we live in a great place, it's awesome. But we worked hard and the taxpayers before us paid a lot of money over the years to keep it the way it is right now, so I, I kind of get it. Um, so that's kind of what I'm hearing anyways, but, you know, if any of you would like to chime in on what your, your gut is or how you feel about. Some of the stuff we talked about, that'd be awesome to get some feedback.
I think that's, you have, it's one thing to, um, try and keep everything exactly the way it is, but if we actually did that, it'd still be in that old high school. So, um, instead, what we did is we moved forward, we, we, we voted forward, put the money up and we built a state-of-the-art school.
I love the school, we were a top fifty school then and we're a top fifty school now.
Yeah, yeah.
So I love the school.
Yeah, I went to that school, so I don't know. So, so, yeah, so I mean, there, there is, there is, there's limits to, uh, to keeping everything exactly the way it is.
Well, and, and that too, Warren, that was a very expensive project.
It was.
And we're all in the middle of paying for that, and we have other projects that are also very large. That we may be paying more, the taxpayers will figure out, you know, the, the people here in town will figure out how they're gonna juggle that one. And, you know, you talk to the elderly especially, they want to fix income. Anything that affects that, that bottom line is horrifying for them. That's an absolute disaster. One move and they're just on the cliff, looking over the cliff, and there's a lot of elderly. That right now, they've been in town for many years, they pay taxes, they built the town, they, they contributed, you know, for a long, long time, and now they're looking at extinction. That's kind of sad. It is, you know, so there's a lot of things that kind of play into what's, what we're talking about tonight, um. And maybe impact and who knows, and there's, there's still a lot of unanswered, uh, questions, I think.
We still, we do have, we still are, to some extent, have an aging population in this town. So still services for that aging population is going to be important. Good, next.
I think Jeff, uh, has some good points here, um. I think ultimately the big thing is we really need to address is, uh, we got this big issue coming up, really with the C P C, how to do it, we need to figure out revenue. You know, we can spend all this money, we can get this infrastructure, we can get new apartments in, more things like that, we need commercial, that's what we need, we need businesses. We need commercial space, we need industrial, manufacturing, whatever we can get, that we're actually gonna get revenue from, that's gonna help us with our taxes, that's gonna help us with infrastructure and everything. That's what we ought to focus on, if we're gonna spend the time and the resources here in the C P C, as a community, investing in, building infrastructure for folks who aren't already in the town. We ought to watch out for the people who are here in the community first, there's no question, solar energy really shouldn't be in the revenue side of things. I think we ought to start, you know, focusing that, I think, you know, as I think you guys have said, this is taking away from that idea, you know. We've done a good job managing our facilities and all of our services from transportation to the schools, everything else, you know. Now we gotta step up when it's the C P C, we ought to focus on these, these revenue generating businesses so we can stay afloat as a town. If we put all of our resources into putting in these apartments and these buildings, we got enough residential, you know, we got enough, you know, that, that's not common.
Well, and normally it's a development that's been into these projects, so, um, so we, 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 um, over the years. We've tried very hard to hold on to the commercial land that we've had, and then, then nobody will know better than Mr. O'Leary, we know how many. Saying how many pieces we've lost to housing, problem can comes, when you have a piece of property, you can zone it, um, uh, commercial, um. And then nobody buys it. And then somebody will give it two million dollars for it, then somebody else says, I'll give it thirty million dollars for it, but I don't have a building. Those are the, those are the problems, so I think it wasn't, uh. To find, uh.
Well, I mean, to Max's point, if you look at Concord, it's, you know, wall-to-wall industrial, you know, or semi-commercial, whatever. So, does, there is a need for it, you know, if you zone it for that, you'll bomb down there, where else are you gonna find the land? That's our, that's our biggest problem, we got it down Main Street and that's about it, that's the only land around, you know, we're all wetlands and residential. Most of the residential, as you drive around it every, every week, seems to be getting gobbled up and built on, so there is a lot of land.
We've had a couple of like, uh, the old stop, the old stop shop property, you know, we had a, uh, seventy women proposal for that, but it was gonna be so intrusive. Into our neighborhoods and into our town.
Last hour delivery.
Yeah, last hour delivery.
They, they, uh, they dropped the diligence on the.
Yeah, it wouldn't have been, it wouldn't, it could have been a commercial location, but it would have been an empty box, not worth all that much. And it would have added traffic and stuff, uh, to our infrastructure, it would have been disastrous. So, uh, we're still, we're constantly, you know, looking for somebody to come in and take some of these properties and do something with it, but, um. But we, we miss, we're missing some of the things that these properties need, for example, we have a new sewer. So, um, you're not gonna get a nice manufacturing plant here if you don't have some way to handle waste levels. So, uh, but that's one of the things before the town right now, and, and it, and with that performance in right now, it's gonna change its form a few times before we. Before we finally come up with something that is acceptable in town, or works in town, but in the meantime, this is the thing, that every time. We have a, a, a discussion about business, about growing businesses and growing the business in the town, first thing that comes up is the word sewer, so. So we, we need to, perhaps, we have a point being focused a little more on that and see if we can help the town along with that.
Yes, uh, thank you, Jim. Uh, in regard to, with, uh, Jeff, Mr. Vivid, as you were saying, here, in regard to seniors, you know. Want things to remain the same, I don't want that to be mistaken, as seniors don't appreciate change, change is inevitable. Okay, um, maintain the town, uh, will have inevitable increases to costs and so, that's always going to be. But I think what he's really saying there is, is that it has to be a managed change, has to be a change that is, is a normal progression. So that, and if I took the attitude as senior that I am now, I took the attitude of, of change, well, if somebody in town had taken that. Uh, in nineteen ninety-five, I wouldn't be here because that's a change of government who happens to divide and department. So, uh, I think seniors understand that change is available, but the, so what I'm looking for, the.
What you want to say is you want to hold on to the character of the town.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Character of the town.
There has to be a normal.
Judgment aggression, James.
And so we're all for that, we did that in school, uh, we've got a, uh, uh, a system, uh, at the school itself that we put in there that. Support all the buildings around it, there, you know, we had that, we haven't taken advantage of that, okay?
It's, I think it's in the words.
It's, it's common, yeah.
I know, but we haven't taken advantage of it, it's coming, but we haven't taken advantage of it.
That's, that's one of the best ideas we did a lot of times.
So, so, uh, so seniors are not against change, we don't want to stay in the nineteen fifties or sixties or seventies, okay? We understand.
That was kind of.
We want the, uh, right, 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 we want, we want that progression, needs to be managed, like your own house. You don't put an addition on your house if you don't have money, that kind of thing, so.
So another one, one of the other things that I, I, uh, Dave didn't mention, I thought he might, but the, uh. The state was in the process of trying to come up with a state A D U law. Know about that?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, that was, that was another part of their, um. Another part of their plan, I think, but to do that, that, that kind of takes us down a level that we didn't want to go, that we just mentioned, so.
So I think, um, for tonight's meeting, Mr. Chair, that's just adding a lot to the town. I just think that we should stay on track with the M B T A stuff.
Since you can't, you're not running like those things, so I was just interested in the A D Us. I knew that that was gonna be a topic that people were talking about. That was gonna be a huge.
Wasn't the subject of today's meeting, this isn't even a regular C P C meeting, but.
Most information.
So there's a lot that people need to know about A D Us, how it affects them.
Well, I think the, the only thing that, because it's one of the things, you know, that we could, that we could get hit with. Again, from the state, if they, if they, if they successfully look at this.
But I, I don't know if anybody knows what A D U is, is a mandatory dwelling, which allows you to put a housing back out, so someone you live.
And so.
Or, or.
Supposed to be for.
Or, or addition, you know.
Yeah, supposed to be for anyone.
All the modification of the inside of an existing house will allow for a separate apartment.
It's a separate building on the property.
Doesn't necessarily have.
Then you have a multi-family home with an apartment for in-laws, it was supposed to be directed so that people can move out of their house. Give their house to their children and then the seniors live in the A D.
I know in California they put that law forward and everything and they, they have, you know, some minimum size and all that. And, uh, they thought it was gonna solve their problem and it didn't, it was a flaw.
Well, what it is, is once it, once it happens, it's supposed to be restrictive in that the in-laws can live in it, when the in-laws. Retire, probably pass away, then it becomes a rental unit, so what in effect it does is it makes a property a rental one. And, you know, we find, we find them around town, all of, and some of the, uh, industrial, we found them, you know, we find them in detached garages.
Right.
They just found one last, maybe a couple months ago, and it got shut down, they were renting it out. So, you know, it creates a problem with the power company.
Well, that's just another thing we need to keep an eye on and then there's always a concern about it, when it comes up and perhaps even if they begin to push that. Um, that we talked to our state rep and our state senator and we, uh, expressed that this party will then take of that, that.
Um, someone on Zoom has a question they would like to ask. Um, yes, uh, do you have a question?
Yes, I wasn't sure if I should speak or if I should chat. Can you hear me? So, um, my name is Joyce Wells, I live at, um, one Culvers Lane. I was online today on the Community Connection and there was quite a bit of chatter, which is why I decided to tune in. And I was wondering, so just thank you so much for all the information, it's been really helpful. I was wondering if we are not going to benefit in the way, so David was talking a little bit about how we will not be getting any more affordable housing, et cetera. What are some ways we might benefit other than avoiding being sued?
Well, probably the, the, the first one, we won't get hit with any of those seventeen different restrictions against the grants that we, that we would be applying to. Um, um, that's kind of not a really great, uh, reason not to do it, but. But it is, it is a reason, it is something.
Mass works is real.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the, the real original trade.
Yeah, yeah, the original, yeah, so they, they would lose our access to those grants. So that's, um, uh, that's not what I necessarily call advantage, but it was just trying to dodge that boat.
Do you have a suggestion, Joyce?
I, I don't. This has just been really informative. There were, you know, quite a few people. Fear mongering a little bit, for lack of a better expression, talking about how. This is going to require the town to sort of suddenly build seven hundred and fifty units, and. When people see that and read that, it, it worries them and it makes them afraid, and like everyone's talking about, they worry about the town changing. So, now that I clearly realize that is not the case. Um, which is what, which is what I was hoping, I'm just sort of now sort of mulling it over, thinking. You know, why is this good and why is this bad? So I, I think I just have some more thinking to do and some more reading to do, but I would encourage you all to. Get as much information about this out there in the public, because I do think there is a lot of misinformation going around. That would be my, that would be my advice, yeah.
I think the, and you, you got to it, I think. The, the, the people that are misled to think that we're, we have to now build. The eight hundred units or whatever, um, do need to be, you know, educated on what really is going on, but. There is, as we spent a lot of time on, a lot of nuance and, and the pros and cons of, of this decision for us. Again, not being, not impacting us in many ways, but also the unknown by, by going that way, so. That, that's, I, I think the part everyone needs to just come to terms with and. What they feel is the right thing.
The biggest one, as you said, is that, the biggest one is they think that if we vote for this, that we're gonna have to go right out and start building these things, but not.
But we don't know, you know, again, this is not our problem, but for the other towns, again, the, they, the administration. You know, it started in twenty-one with passage of this, but the, the, the new administration is all about production, so. We don't know, it's back to the whole thing, we don't know, it's what we don't know, so what, what are gonna be the incentives that make people. Wanna put things in production faster, there could be financial incentives using our tax office.
There was, there was, I don't recall.
Maybe gonna have that happen, but.
I don't recall, there was some. Is, is our billion dollars would be put aside.
For vacant buildings.
Yeah, to try to rehab.
Yeah, vacant buildings, that's, that's.
They did put some money aside to try to, you know, give the job start. The seed money was to, to start, start the process going on some of these, some properties, so there was, there wasn't, they didn't, they didn't attempt to help. Here, but, uh, I mean, I think we would prefer that they didn't try to, you know, but they should have. In the very beginning, I was talking to Danielle about this, I said, well, they're gonna keep, they're gonna come up with waivers for the towns that don't have any instance level known. I'm like, you know, cause we don't have a train or a bus moved or anything, so, you know, I think they'll let us off the hood, nope. That's what I was hoping.
Yeah, our assessments are even in the last three years, they're down to like seven thousand dollars a year. I think maybe the last year it would jump back up to fourteen, but. You know, since two thousand twenty, we've been assessed and paid two point two million dollars to the T. And when I first came into town, I remember how much people were up in arms because we were, you know, getting huge assessments and getting zero service really. Um, and then, then, then it started to peter down only in the last four years or so, so then it went down to fourteen grand. Seven, I think, twenty-one or two, and then last year fourteen, I don't know what the last year was, but. It's, it's gone to almost nothing, so we're like MBTA community light right now. And to Leon's point, you know, what are we really getting? They're getting to attach this. New law to us when, when we're paying fourteen grand a year, you know, yeah.
David, David, is there, is there a way to, um, I don't, I don't know, um. Build, build that into the agreement where, you know, if we agree to this, sort of what are you going to give us in return? Other than the grants that we're already entitled, you know, I'm, I'm listening to people in the audience, they're talking about how. They don't have the ride service. I grew up in Reading and we had the commuter rail, the bus, the ride, everything, and it was great. And I agree, we do need to do more for our senior citizens and other people who have those needs. Is there any way we can build in some sort of, you know, you give us this, we'll, we'll give you that? I have no idea.
Well, to some, to some extent, that, that, first of all, the state's not really in, in the, in the mind to negotiate. But again, the guy from the M A P C made it pretty clear that any kind of regional transit authority that had a regular. A regular route would probably not be used, or would have one rider a day or something. So they kind of, uh, thought that wasn't really, he, he hadn't thought that wasn't a good, that the system that we had right now was serving us. They're low, so, go ahead, Jeff.
Oh, okay, um, yeah, so, um, Joyce, I appreciate you paying attention tonight. I think that's great. We try to encourage more of this, we really do. One thing I've learned about grants. Um, when the state is in a fiscal crisis, and, um, I was at a meeting, um, a while back, and our representative. Was, uh, one of our reps was throwing a lot of numbers out there, and it was really a lot of money. Uh, what he was talking about, and the deficits that the state is not receiving. So what, what we're seeing is even existing grants that are out there, that are available. Uh, a lot of those grants are being diminished, dissolved, or reduced, so. You know, they could say, hey, well, you know, you're now eligible for X amount of grants to apply for. There is no guarantee with the state, uh, they're not gonna guarantee any of those grants, they're not gonna. Um, they're not gonna say, hey, we're gonna give you five million dollars if you sign on for the next three years guaranteed, that's never gonna happen. Um, what they do, what they have a tendency to do is when they want something, they dangle the fruit very low. Um, and they expect, you know, that the, the taxpayer grab it, or the people grab it, because at the time it seems great. Well, that's good, even if they were to Daniel, say, five million dollars. What's to stop the state from saying, no, we can't fund it next year, sorry? You know, like, oh, what's to stop the state from dissolving it completely and saying it doesn't exist anymore? So then we're, we're kind of holding the bag with, with that, so, you know, it's kind of like grants. They are good, there is a lot of good things, I'm not saying they're not, what I'm saying, it's never a guarantee, they're, they're allowing us to, to. Basically, um, file for them, that's great, okay, you can file for all of them, you ain't get any of them. And they don't ever tell you what the grant amounts are for either, so it's not like they have a list with the whole cage full of numbers on there and say, oh, if you file for this. X, Y, Z, you're gonna get, you know, six million dollars, that's never available, it's always after the fact. So that makes it a little hard for a small town like ours to try to govern amongst ourselves and be somewhat successful and witty in what we do. Because the future, you know, what we decide really today is definitely going to affect the future, and. It might not be, you know, five years, it might not be ten years, but it will be at some point. Effective, that what happens with the states asking us to do, it will affect us. So that, that's just me on, on that end, Joyce, thank you.
We have, uh, we have things like Hillview Country Club, this is for the pockets, it results in grants that we got a huge sum of money. Um, so, in the past, that had been the source, when we had a major project like that, and they, if we did get supported, we, we have those. Two beautiful pieces of property as a result of that, so. Um, so, so the people thing, um, like in the L U C, I'm looking at some kind of a project, uh. Looking at an intergenerational center, which, uh, uh, which, which is being looked at. You know, and, and then of course to fund it, you, you can get, you can get grants for the intergenerational center. But the question is, if we put ourselves in a position that can get those events, are they, are they, is that a good idea? Scott said a lot of this stuff.
I mean, again, that, sticking with the law, the language that's in the original law, that. That would be fair, you know, by the state, they told you, these three discretionary funds, you would lose.
Yeah.
Ability to get them, so, and, and so we're just trying to be black and white, that would be fair.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, that pro state here, but that would be, they told you.
Yeah.
And you elected not to do it, so. It's the other ones, or it's the other things they're doing suing people, you know.
We have that fire station thing coming up too, and I'm not sure if there's grant money being looked at, looked at for there as well. You know, it's just one of those, uh, it's one of those things. If, if we would be, if this was hurting us in some way, um. Directly hurting us in some way, but because, because of the situation that we have, we're just extremely, extremely lucky, or to call it that. Um, uh, that we're able to do what we're able to do, cause a lot of communities can't, so. But you still have to weigh the whole thing about, is it worth, um. Because without, this isn't hurting us, I'm not being hurt, should we kind of go along with it at this particular point? And again, realizing that if, if enough, you know, enough of the, uh, um. Towns and municipalities object to it, and they win. You're gonna take everybody to court, and they win, in court they do class action, and when they win in court, we're off to hope this is what was there.
Well, what I, what I said is a question to Danielle, um, you know, before the joint meeting with the select board is. It was, I think, I think it was, I made it more illegal, you know, but can, if we're even gonna do this, can we. Somehow just state that we are doing this voluntarily. Well, just telling that, you know, I know it's formal and it, uh, it, or it's just putting it in writing that we are not. We're doing this because we're, we're electing to, I, I don't know, I, I think by the act of just doing the zoning, the change, you're doing it, but. I just wanna say like, we're not, we're not doing this because you're making us do this, we're doing, you know, we're, we're doing this because we elect to do this, so. It just, I don't like the.
Something that you'd like to express, I was trying to figure out a way to express a sentiment like that, if you wanted to. Um, so, you know, I was just, I was saying, you wanted to put that into writing, so the CPC. Needs to give a report to town meeting, so that town meeting can vote on the zoning article. The report can be whatever you think is appropriate, but it can say that, it can say, if you wanna make comments about what. You would like to express about this whole thing, I, I think that that would be fine to put it into the report to the meeting, if you wanna do that.
And I think, now, and I'm remembering now, cause it was a few weeks back, but it was more like, just stating that you do not have the right. To, to change our zoning, we are doing this voluntarily, and so you're, at least the town's getting out ahead of it and saying. We, we have this right that was granted to us in the constitution in nineteen sixty-six. Um, that allowed this home rule provision, that we are in charge of our. Our, our destiny, our zoning, and we, we uphold those same constitutional rights. And, cause I think that's the argument by Milton, you can't penalize a, a city or town. For exercising their constitutional right to tell the state, no, we don't wanna change our zoning. So that's, it's a pretty high level thing, you know, that they're, that sits in front of the court right now.
For the record, we, everything that we did, we did run through town council.
Right.
But, uh, we made sure that, that, uh, right from the very beginning to determine if we were in fact. An MBTA adjacent community, uh, that was like the first question, are we, are we really the subject of this? And, um, and, and we, we pretty much run everything through town council to make sure, and, and our town council doesn't just do us. They have, I forget how many, you know how many communities they have?
Eight towns.
They have a lot, they have a lot of communities.
They represent over a hundred communities.
There you go, thank you, Steve. So, so, yeah, so then I'm just looking at our little thing here, they're looking at. A lot of communities that are the same, that, that might have the same issue, um, of not having the space, or having the space being. Taken over that they don't wanna give up, so that would probably. Mean that if we got enough, enough of them got together, now council might wanna take it on as a, uh. As, as a, uh, suit against the state, as a class action suit against the state, it seems they can get it to, uh, to drop off, but. Uh, but just, just so you know, that, that, that town council is on top of this, they're working with it, they're dealing with it every day. Because they're with so many communities, so we, we're getting probably the best of those we can right, right now. Yes, Jeff?
Yes, uh, uh, to your point, uh, Dave, uh, with the. Uh, had that same argument, the state, so we're already doing things, okay? And we're, we're.
Yeah, we have a housing production plan and everything, we have all that here.
Right, okay, and, uh, but they, the state did not take that into consideration. They still are zoning them, but watching the MBTA, um, uh. Plan on, so, and that's why they're saying, it's a new way ahead of it. There are a few tasks that go that, that way. That was really gonna be my question, uh, what assessments from the MBTA. Before, okay, and for how many years now we've been paying into that program, we have not had service, has been.
We've been doing, no, more than that, sixty years roughly, cause.
We did have a little bit of service.
Yeah.
Bus for a little while.
Yeah, when the, we had the bus, the chain, when I was in high school, was one of the last time.
Yeah.
Everybody used, but it was at the Laughlin Park.
Right, right.
Exactly, the end of the line.
Yeah, the world line, they drank the same.
But I thought we voted, we voted, if nobody was riding.
That's right.
And, you know, people in the town of North Reading today, which I'm in everybody's property, which is the most, this four or five cars and everybody's driving. I don't, nobody really used that, except for the kids from the boat, to get to the other cities and towns, because. Northeast was spread from twelve different cities and towns. I had friends in Bellville and all of them, and I'd never drive with us. I would take the bus, to the mall, and, or, you know, wherever I could, outside of that.
Right, so then we had the trial times. Runs down the side of twenty-eighth, that's the old trial times.
Yeah, my mother will talk to you about that.
Yeah.
So, she said he's nineteen thirty.
So perhaps I may continue, uh, where I was going with this, is that I know that the CPC has spoken about this before. Um, with regard to, you know, how did we become an MBTA community? What are we an MBTA?
Yes.
Okay, and my, my question is, I know the lawyers have said, yes, we are, okay? From what I understand, all right, but I haven't seen the warrant article. Uh, in the year that it was passed, okay, and I think that for the lack of showing proof of that. Okay, I don't think we should be in a position where we should take. People's word with that, we are something, and we can't prove that yet, sometimes.
I kind of researched it, cause we had, we had the same as the board, we had the same questions.
Same question.
Danielle, I'll pull up a lot of the information, so I kind of dug into it, and. So I think I was just mentioning that the, the Acts of sixty-four. That's when the MTA was dissolved and they created the MBTA. And at that time, in the, in the Acts, they stated that new, if they created a new, I saw, it's section eighteen. They created one sixty-one A, and that's what we, we've come to know is, you know, that's where this started from. Um, there was, and in the language, and I have the book and page and everything, they, they had fourteen cities and towns. Those were the ones that had rail, and then there were sixty-four additional towns, and it's just, they use that language throughout. Even the latest, the three A, it'll say, back to the original fourteen cities and towns, and the sixty-four, you know, so that started with the seventy-eight. And really went a long time, not until, um, I think the three A, did they start to add even more to that, but. Yeah, there's plenty now, but back, back when the Acts came out, um, and six, and by the way, one sixty-one A, the MBTA. You know, the original MBTA wasn't passed into, into law until two years later, same year actually as the constitution for the home rule. Um, amendment was made, but the, um, they had two sections, as they stated kind of in the, in the, in the joint meeting. They had two sections, section fifteen and sixteen, fifteen allowed a town to vote itself out. And get out of the MBTA, and if you had to go to town meeting, had to be two-thirds, gave you exact language ballot, copies of it right here. And the other section sixteen allowed you to opt in, so they did have a provision back then when the original Acts were created. Um, and again, the MBTA, that whole Act was created to really manage real estate, it was just to manage, this is where our tracks are, this is where we have stations, and. And now we're gonna assess everyone, so back to your original question, Jeff, when you said, when did North Reading start paying assessments? Roughly around sixty-six, sixty-five, sixty-six is where we, we were among those seventy-eight communities that started being assessed. So the, the Acts in the one sixty-one lays out exact percentages too, it's one point X share, like it's, we all paid a share. Of assessment, and that's carried its way, like I said, all, all the way until two thousand twenty-one, there hasn't been much change, our services have changed. And I'm, I'm sure our assessments have changed, but it's two twenty-one is when they grabbed it and said, you know. We got all these people in MBTA, we're calling them MBTA, and they even changed that term in twenty-one, uh, twenty-two, sorry. Um, to the adjacent and all that stuff, but let's do something. um to the adjacent and all that stuff, but let's do something, I guess, yeah, because a lot of it, you know, for for us, we're not necessarily, you know, very MBTA adjacent, but um but yeah, that's how we got to where we are, and I hope that helps, sorry.
So you don't need to make the half of mine.
But yeah, we so I mean, we we never voted ourselves in, we just became, and and yeah, well, we never voted ourselves out, but they one sixty one, when it was acted in law two years later, after the Acts, section fifteen to sixteen, actually, section fifteen's gone, sixteen still has the opt in, so you still have the opt in uh provision in the new in the law, one sixty one A. They got rid of the opt out, so there's no, it's like some law, we're in.
Tell me how you got in, the bottom line is, you did not in, you did not in, okay?
It's a fair question, but I think it's, it's a fair question, it it happened to be at the time, I'm I'm just assuming service, you were receiving service. And so you were, you were identified, and it lists the town, it says North Red, you know, along with the other places.
So that's.
Yeah, we're in that, we're in that uh that sixty four, I call it, so we're not in the fourteen, where we were probably getting bus service or maybe whatever.
Yeah, it's a bus.
Yeah, you, you know, so.
That they picked up with Centene's and then.
But that's, and I think council agreed with that, I know they.
So, no, didn't that come to a? No, no, how did it end?
The bus stop?
Uh what ended was the bus service ended.
It stopped taking the bus.
Remembering lots of me, how did that end?
Again, it was just like a ridership and we just started complaining about the assessments, so.
They're like, see us.
You know, you used to.
I don't have a.
Balladville.
Yeah.
Balladville and over, got the running line.
Yeah.
Lack of use.
Oh, I know that there was no one on, I really wrote this thing, that's.
Yeah, but didn't they have to go through all the anyway? No, they go around, you know.
Yeah, I agree, so the bus, they went around.
There's a small parking lot up there.
Yeah, church, yeah, by the church.
Thank you.
By the church.
I was looking for a way to find one.
The town council would read, I mean, they did the same similar research and said, no, you know, you're right, so. But the only thing that always, and and again, it did come to an end at a point, because suddenly a bunch of people realize, and you pay like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
For ending the bus, so wait a minute, I don't even pay anymore, so. It costs a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I hear it, trying to do the, that's the translation. There you go, yeah.
Yeah, in two thousand two, we paid two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah. The one that we got a budget for.
And then by nineteen was one oh four, that was kind of the average, about a hundred thousand dollars in nineteen.
Yeah.
And then from two thousand twenty on, again, only four years ago, is when it started to drop off. Went to thirty one thousand in two twenty, seventy nine thousand in two two twenty one, fourteen twenty two, twelve twenty three, projected thirty three hundred this year.
Those were the years we were redirecting some of the assessment and logistic value.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, so it could still be with with that redirection, that we could still be near this, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Maybe fifty, you know, fifty grand or something like that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, but we do get service from the services, better go, the health services will come, just to have.
Yeah, I don't think most people would argue, if you're getting service, you should get service, you know, that's fair.
They just don't realize that that Bernard Bell Health Services is redirecting some of the clients, they may not realize that.
One thing, with this, we have the all the housing.
Just say your name real quick, Steve. You have to say your name.
Oh, yeah, John Allen, I mentioned, yeah, yeah.
This is a recall, I can't see who.
We kind of hit the boat in a way by said that they have the housing, it's already there, towns that don't and don't want to reject it, they would may have to create this fifty acres, and then they would have a big, much bigger uh issue.
Then all they gotta do is zone it, you know, you have to make it really clear, all they have to do is zone it, and then they don't have to build anything.
For now.
For now, yeah. For, well, now, six months after the uh zoning change.
Plant, they're trying to say, you know, we're gonna create some location where building can happen, so so, you know, and again, fifty acres in a town the size is such a small percentage of the town, they look at it like, it's not a good deal. But it is, when you're taking down, like in some of the towns where they're gonna take, they would have to take down, I mean, not that they're gonna take down, so that's what they would have to do in order to build on that site. So result, consider eternity without anything ever being built. So, yes.
So, one, why?
You have to say your name.
A CGM, not really like, so where where, you know, this creates a huge ominous horror, how would you plan, that's why I'm.
Oh, I know.
Thinking about it, and I hadn't had an assistant since two thousand seventeen, actually longer than that, which we finally bought them because they allocated a bunch together, an assistant, but when you start adding units like this, you might even have to add another one, like some of all this.
And when we, when we.
My 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 point is this, I just wanted to ask a question where, because Rob just rejected it last night.
Yeah.
And so, you know, all these lawsuits, they're gonna be pending, why wouldn't we just wait to see the result of what's happening with these lawsuits?
Well, I mean.
Why don't you go commit to an area where you don't want to build?
If that was the case, Steve, the problem with, that it, you know, I mean, if we had that kind of, the problem is it's got, it's got, we have timeframes it was supposed to be. If we don't meet the timeframe, then we lose uh whatever it is we, and 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 since we really, really don't have a um we really don't have a big stake in this, because the place is already built, but what I was gonna say is, when Ed.
Well, we do have a big stake, the stake is. When Ed's your autonomy is.
When Ed was built, they had all kinds of assistance, but the building inspector needed a couple of assistants, and they were, Ed was a mess.
We don't have, we have myself, we have, again, Sarina, that had no assistance, Ray hasn't got assistance.
Yeah.
They they don't have to come by, Midfield just gone, and over, and who increased their rate of pay, because they they had it on the books for years. So, you know, as far as the building department's concerned, right now, because of the position that I have with my full time job, I'm able to accommodate the town's business, but for the most part, our jobs can be all full time jobs, with what we have going on, just in the town today.
Right.
Plan, you know, so my only question, before you admit it like that, and you know, most of the public around this, but that's that's why I asked the question, well, the lawsuits, why wouldn't you wait to see how it pans out, because if nobody's been, nothing's been resolved yet right now to this point, why would you commit, even though they're giving these updates?
Well, right now, the lawsuits are the states against the towns.
That's right.
So it's not as if the towns are suing the state winning or losing, um so um uh again, I mean, it's it's a risk, it's a gamble, and it's one that if we had something on the line, something huge on the line, then we might want to gamble.
Well, the gamble, do we give up our, do we give up our autonomy as a town to govern ourselves and set our own zones?
Well, first of all, we've already done that, and any.
Yeah, it'll be done by the state.
We're Commonwealth, not a state.
Well, then.
That makes a difference.
Yeah, I think it is.
So um uh you you uh, I know, we're talking, kind of giving a lot of that out, um so I I think that's somewhat semantics, because.
Well, give me an example of of this state making us change our zoning, what zoning have we changed?
First of all, with the subdivision control law, we have come to the state.
That's just a, I mean, that's just a solid, uh a set of rules, it's not telling about its own, it's not telling you how its own part of your town.
Well, no.
That's that's giving you a set of, I think of of well constructed rules, this is how you do it, but and again, people get throughout the forty B thing, the forty B is not, again, changing your zoning, you know?
Not changing your zoning, I had to sit around seven, should be ten different projects here in the town I was running, for forty B.
The Alster, one.
Because the state has mandated that if we don't meet our housing needs, the ten percent threshold.
Yeah.
Our zoning, they don't write us, they just ignore you.
Eliminated, yeah, but but it's not, it's not.
It doesn't exist as far as they, because they haven't met the state mandates. Once again, state rules overrule local rules, they overrule petitions, only to the extent that the state doesn't require something more, right? When it comes to the affordable housing aspect, then with the forty B, you know, we don't come close, and the only thing that bailed us out was Ed.
Right, right.
Because we talked to the developers, we said, why don't you go with a rental project over here as opposed to condominiums? Because we're only gonna get twenty, twenty five percent of the four hundred units, we did a hundred, a hundred and six, whatever it's gonna be. But if you go rental, you get credit for four hundred and six, so why don't you go to four hundred and six, let's go with the rental units, that's why you have a rental facility over there as opposed to condominiums, and that bailed us out, we was right over the threshold. Keep in mind, though, once you pick up the four hundred and six units, you're forty six units in the hole, because you just increased your stock by ten percent, but that's how you go around.
It's.
So forty B is a very primary sample as to how these, for the cities and towns that are gonna be suing the state, it's a loser, it's already been adjudicated, the state has the right to overrule local authority when it comes to zoning and things of that nature.
And Steve, forty B does not change zoning.
It doesn't, no, it doesn't change it, it overrules, it ignores.
I'm just saying, no, I it's it's important to have a black, it doesn't, it's important to be black and white on that.
All right.
It's it doesn't.
Excuse me, what what does a forty B, the forty B, the forty B process of central?
This is our means, Steve.
Where, where is, where does it fit into our zone?
Okay, so let me, again, start with what I just said, is it does not change your zoning, it allows builders to put in more density if they go with twenty five percent affordability using the eighty percent AMI. So it 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 could be in this room, it it has nothing to do with the exact location in town, it is wherever they can get in, they can pull the forty B thing and get that density for affordability, it's not a zoning change, I just want to be clear. That's all I'm saying, you're very right about the state doing whatever it wants.
Be clear about is that the property with these forty B buildings have taken place have a zone, and they're zoned for some purpose, they're zoned for some purpose.
Oh, up up here, it was written, it was commercial, but what's up here?
Industrial, industrial, my name.
It was all commercial back there, and they just took it and made it all residential.
We have local zoning laws here, and every parcel of land in this town we're not running is zoned for some use, but has a permitted use. Correct?
Yeah.
Every parcel of land has some sort of permitted use here, so I'll identify. And what the state says, you can go by what you can have here in your community, so long as you meet requirements of affordable housing, if you haven't met it, a developer can come in, regardless of where it is in your community, and your local zoning is going to be overruled.
Right.
It's going to be ignored.
But Steve, well, it's not overruled, it just end arounds if you don't need the.
It's overruled, it's ignored, it's ignored.
It's.
It's not zoning, it is zoning.
Yeah.
It ignores your local zoning laws and overrides them.
Yeah, you still, you still need to go to.
Yeah, it's gonna be, they don't even have to build no way to last standing.
Right.
You know, and we've done a very good job of mitigating impact.
Yes.
Over the years, because we worked with the developers.
Yeah.
Rather than having to appeal to the state, because once they appeal to the state and they win, all of our discretionary and all of our ass go away.
Yeah, we have no.
They don't, they have, you know, we have control, Warren served on a number of these committees with me here. We went right down to the lighting, the light fixtures, the siding on the buildings, the screening, the planning, everything.
We work with them, though.
We work with them to get that done, in those instances where we're gonna work with them, we would have no say in anything, entrance, key press, access, zero.
Does, yeah.
So it does impact your zoning right now, and this state law already in place, and this court case is all of the place that has allowed the state to come in and overrule and serve a mental vote, zoning laws.
So you're making, you're making the argument why people should be nervous about voting for this?
No, not why, no, I know I'm.
You're just saying, you're showing like the the state.
It's not a question of being nervous, it's a question of accepting the fact that the jurisdictional rights, why with the state?
So why submit, so why submit to this whole area?
I'm sorry?
Why submit then, just voluntarily, why not just let them have to do it?
You need to recognize what your position is and where your strengths and where you weigh this, so. This is a losing case, if you're asking me to remember the board to sit here and appropriate money to sue the sue the state of Massachusetts, that's a wasted taxpayer's money. That's a waste of money.
Yeah, I think a lot of people.
Again, I understand the principles, yes, and and I stand on principles as much as anybody else does, but not with your money. Not with your money, this is a situation where it's a no win situation. The legislation has come, come to the town, and when this first passed, I wasn't aware of all the nuance with the law, I was outraged. Outraged at my state rep, my state senator, for not keeping us informed, planning commissioner had no idea, select board had no idea.
Yeah, we didn't hear it till the last minute.
We didn't hear it till it was passed.
Yeah.
Absolutely outraged, I'm saying, how can we get seven hundred and fifty units in this community from our sewerage? We said not in sewerage, we have civic systems, how are we gonna do it, where are we gonna find fifty acres and put seven hundred and fifty units?
Yeah.
And where are you gonna put the other?
Yeah, so there's the.
We can't do that, absolutely no sense, but then when you look at the law, this is the long ball law.
Yeah.
This is one, if they're saying, you know what, we're not gonna tell you where to put it, unless you unless you're right in the community, it needs to be a half a mile up here, there, didn't affect us because we're an adjacent community. What they said was, you have to allow by right, through your zoning laws, certain density, by fifty acres, to five angle lots, to ten angle lots, or whatever you want to do, find some locations in the community and allow it by right under your zoning, change your zoning laws, allow it by right, and then through the course of time, as properties change hands, the developers don't have to go through the special permitting process and variances in the local community level, they can just do it as a matter of right, because you change your zoning to allow board, and then through the process of time, as properties turn over, they will eventually take place.
I think no doubt.
You think this is a long term play?
Oh, certainly it's a long term, because if it wasn't a long term play, we'd have to find a slot with seven hundred and fifty units.
Right.
This is a long term play in the state's mind, and again, it affects communities differently depending upon what opportunities they have.
I'm not sure the other towns agree with that.
Fantastic job, you've done a fantastic job of identifying, Daniel.
I don't think so. You have to, you you have certainty that, you know, I'm I'm gonna respect, so why do you question my my uncertainty? Yeah, I mean, aren't we equal partners here, like you're you're certain.
Fantastic job, Daniel has done a fantastic job about identifying for our community what opportunities we have within the confines of our town, where can we do this? And making sure that it doesn't have a significant impact in the short, in the short term to come into compliance, you've done a magnificent job for us, we're lucky, right, we're very fortunate, other communities are not as lucky. Doesn't mean it's gonna happen overnight in these other communities, what it means is there'll be opportunities in these other communities over a period of time to get it done, so this is a long ball, they didn't even attach an affordability aspect to it, they just need, they're trying to address the housing crisis, the lack of housing in a regional, in a regional area. The MBTA has nothing to do with it other than geographically pointing out what communities are being impacted by it.
Yeah.
Doesn't have anything to do with, I'm talking to people, you know.
Yeah, so they even call it the A I.
Then they call the MBTA community, give you a geographic location of it, that has nothing to do with the service that we get, are not gonna get, or will ever get. Has nothing to do with, no ties to it at all, it's poor choice of words as far as naming a law, IBTA law, it's silly, because it doesn't have anything to do with services.
If you didn't have the service, so Steve, you wouldn't have to do this, so.
Is it what?
Correct.
If you didn't have the service or weren't originally like.
What they did is they used the MBTA communities as a map, let's say, these are the communities that are impacted.
But you just said it has nothing to do.
Doesn't their proximity to public, public transportation, but it doesn't say that they're going to give you more or less transportation services, but getting back to your certainty of getting it, what should the community do, what's the responsible thing to do? I get, I understand people's outrage as far as the state coming in and telling us what we need to do and how we need to rezone our community. They had the authority to do it, and they've done it, they have the authority to do it, and they've done it. Now it's a question of, are we going to comply, how can we comply? At the chairman's point, we're fortunate, we can comply with little and no impact at all for the foreseeable future, at all.
Would you agree, Mr. Larry, though, we could comply in October town meeting?
I'm not sure.
Does that change?
Talked about the timelines.
I'm just asking.
Again, you're not gonna have a decision, you're not gonna have a court decision in time, because the state judicial, excuse me, the the state judicial court isn't gonna take the case up until October.
Right.
They're not gonna take it up until October, I believe we need to come into compliance by December thirty first, and now is the time to do it. We can't wait till October for the hearing to just start on it, because you're not gonna get a final decision until the first of the year end, so.
Says.
So I think we should, yes, I, I, I'm sorry?
Can you explain that, why we can't do it in October, just so the public understands why?
I believe we need to get into compliance as far as. I believe we need to get into compliance as far as the time.
I know what you're saying.
I think this is more time to get into compliance.
I'm asking a question, Larry. We're the board here, okay? You're, you're gone on for twenty minutes. I'm trying to work. I'm just saying, I'm trying to work.
Twenty minutes, listen to me.
Hey, I'm trying to work with you. I'm just asking you a question. You just made a statement why we can't do October. Can you just explain why?
Believe the people that are looking to wait until October because they think that they're being told right now, for some people who move in, that you're going to have more. More substantive answers to the questions that you want to have, you will not have them in October. You won't have. You're not going to have any more information on the local planning system. You're not going to have any more information in October.
You have to respect other people's opinions, so. I mean, that's your opinion and I appreciate it, but there are people.
This other system works.
Let me add, Dave, let me just point out, I gave him a minute, Jeff. Um. My thoughts about doing it sooner, sooner rather than later is that if you. Um, if you take a town meeting in June and it doesn't pass. You at least get an idea of what the objections are, and you have the opportunity to deal with those objections before the October meeting. That's, that's like, that, and I've said that before, that was the reason I did that position. It's only because you don't know until the, until the vote is taken. You know, whether they're for you or against you. And if they're for you, then you're fine. But if they're against you, at least you'll have an idea of why they're against you, what the.
So again, you're making an argument that's very different from Mr. Larry's. We've already sent this to the town.
I said.
Yeah, exactly. We've already sent this to the town meeting, so it is getting voted on at the town meeting. My point is, you know, what is the problem with it not passing? You know, when you can do it in October?
The question is the opportunity to educate, the opportunity to find out what the, what the, what the objections really are. And. Um, you never know what you got to learn from one of these. That's why we're having this meeting now. You keep saying, we want to hear back from the people. Well. You take it to town meeting and it doesn't pass, you're going to hear from people about what their objection is. Now you know what you have to deal with. So in October, you'd have a much better shot again. And so that's, that's the argument that I made during it right off.
Yeah.
Way back in the beginning.
And and I mean, also, I just want to. We're throwing around like the, the, the possibility of being sued and having to. And I'm not advocating for this, but we spent a lot of the towns' our money um in litigation on Elm. And when we knew going into it, we were grabbing, you know, Volkswagen buses, that's pep sleepers and campers and everything to try to get our number up over the. The threshold so that we wouldn't be under, you know, falling to the forty B. And it was a hail Mary. Um, and it's, you know, instead of just accepting it, we fought it for five, six, whatever years. And I just remember one town meeting after another, another hundred thousand. I don't even know that what was spent on it, you know, but whatever it was. It, there was, there was no one, the town voted each time. You got up, Mr. Larry, you made the case, we got to keep fighting this thing. And everyone kept voting your way. So you weren't really adverse to legal expenses for a hail Mary. You know, and this is less than a hail Mary here. And again, I put it to town meeting, Mr. Larry, so you're kind of arguing with the person that put it to town meeting. I'm trying to look at all the different arguments that I'm hearing from other people, not in this room even. And I'm just trying to formulate some sort of cogent, you know, approach. This is going to get voted on. I'm just one person in that room in June. Um, I'm just not, I don't have the boogeyman kind of. Um, fears that I, I detect from you. Um, if they say no.
I have no fears.
Well, I'm just saying, like, even the legal thing doesn't really scare me if it didn't scare the town off for five to six years on Elm Street or four years, whatever it was, but. Yeah, we, we.
I didn't scare them off on Elm Street. Elm Street, we had thirty, we had residents in the neighborhood, just to explain.
Oh, I know why they don't want it. And I'm with them on that. I'm just saying, we.
They raised thirty thousand dollars of their own money to fight a battle, you know, and.
I don't play with it.
At the time, I didn't play with it. But at the same time, I said, you know, it's an issue where we had a, a. An opportunity, although we had safe harbor. And if the town didn't get involved directly, again, we were not applying to the case.
Very nice, Dan.
We're not applying to the case. And let me, let me help apply the case. Let me already take, probably lay the gesture. Definitely.
Thank you, Warren. Um, yeah, we can go around and around. I get it. I know. It's a crazy thing. I think that my biggest concern really is. And I understand what you're saying, Steve. I totally get it. You're saying that the state is coming in here and steamrolling and do all that stuff and whatever they want. I get, I get it, Steve. I get it. I get it. But if you don't, the town doesn't want it, the town has every right to fight it, even if there are costs associated. If the town doesn't want it. Then you have to go and you have to fight it. So and and because we have litigation that's out there and all this other stuff, we don't know where it's going to land. So. My point is, and my big point is, you have two buildings there that's a hundred and twenty-two units. And I finished, they're not done. I bet Martin's Landing, they're not done. If you go and give it up, you give it up. Here you go. Yeah, zone it, whatever. I'm not going to fight the people in Edgewood and, um, um, that, I'm sorry, Martin's Landing, they paid all this money for these condos. Yeah, we're just going to let it go. We're going to leave it away. We're going to lay down. We're not going to do anything. And if they do it, well, okay, sorry, whatever. I can't control that. State's going to roll us over and do whatever they want. So. I look at this as the people that live there now pay a tremendous amount of money to live there. This has, again, it's going to go to the floor. These people are going to decide. And hang on one second. Those two buildings, I get it. We, we, there is a purpose to, like, what they're going to do, it's all been set forth and all that stuff. But when you lose the zoning right to that and you have two pieces of property that are not built. That are not built out yet. There's no guarantee what's going to happen to those buildings. There's no guarantee. And if you can guarantee that.
Those things are already been approved under the current zoning. They're not subject to the new one. They're already subject to what already they were approved. It was already been approved. It was already been, um, agreed. So they just go in and.
So they just could shake that age, like they could, they could just get rid of the fifty-five, but they'd have to build.
What is a little bit different too. They wanted to come back and get fifty more units out of us, right? Because they had the petition, cleanup and all the rest.
Well, they had to look at, they had to get the state, they had to get state because of the style of construction it was. State changed the law, which allowed them to go that one more story.
So if the state changed the law, that's totally different. That's.
But they, when they came in here and they went through the special permit.
Yeah.
They went to York or what?
Yeah.
They went to York or what? The zoning law.
Uh, we're there again.
Yeah, our plan.
This.
Our plan.
Five hundred units over there.
Our plan.
Five hundred.
Probably different.
We don't know those places you found. Anything else gets done? Let Danielle do zoning. Let Danielle go ahead.
I have to clarify something because we specifically wrote it in the letters to everyone that we mailed to at Martin's Landing, and this remains the case. That it is up to the owners what happens on the site. The state has not, I'm not predicting what the state may or may not do in the future on any property. But the state has not given us any indication that unbuilt lands could somehow be lost control over by their owners. The owners of Martin's Landing own Martin's Landing. And there's no reason for us to think that that would change versus any other property in town. There's nothing. About the unbuilt buildings on Martin's Landing that has to do with loss of ownership or changes from the state. We're just not thinking that. Indication, and I don't want to give people the impression that because we wrote them letters and we explained to them that zoning doesn't impact ownership, and I just really need to make that.
It's five hundred owners. It's five hundred owners and they have to agree to do something. For the land.
I have a, I have a quick question too.
One.
The letters that we sent, Danielle, I'm sorry, excuse me. The letters that we sent, did we attach the law to the letters as well for the owners? We didn't go that far, thank you. Okay.
Yeah. I'm not predicting the state to do in the future. I'm just saying what they have.
They're not going to build it. They're not going to build it. I'm sure in your backyard.
Yeah.
But the zoning of those two buildings does not change. It's already zoned that way.
Yep.
So it's unfair to be fear mongering, but people are there because it's not going to happen. They still have control of their property. And there's five hundred owners over there. They have to agree to do something like that. I don't think that's going to happen.
Yeah.
Don't disagree with you on that.
Yeah, we're just going to change your way of zoning and that's going to be it. That gets us off the hook and allows us to make it and be compliant on December thirty first. Um. That will buy us time. That will buy us time. Because then if we begin to see. As time goes on, as we begin to see some of these cases either being adjudicated or kicked out. Uh, we'll know what we're standing at. Because to do it the other way is, again, I'm not again.
Then you can change your zoning app. You can change it back.
Yeah.
You want, you can go back and change it back.
Yeah.
The point takes, somehow or another, you know, it can work out. You can always change it back. The chances of anything happening in those two pieces of property in the next forty years is slim to none. So the town has plenty of time. We have a show when it comes into compliance, plenty of time to change it back.
Yeah. Should we need to?
Should you need. Or choose, I mean, choose it.
Yeah, yeah.
This is.
And aside, how can you change it back? State is now, even if they lose the case, I don't see how.
It's leaving.
The.
If it loses case, then they get the law. If the law that caused us to do this is negated, then we can, we don't have to.
But I think you made an assumption.
Pardon?
I think you made an assumption, Mr. Steve.
Uh, well, first of all.
The state will find a way, if you keep it, uh.
Uh, you.
And that's fine.
I think that you have something with, with three A, you know, if you read the language of three A, I think there is stuff in it about reversing stuff, but if it loses in a court case, I think that. Might change it, but I think actually you're on something to.
Of those two pieces of property on Martin's Landing and on, on, on Edgewood. The zoning, the zoning with, where. Putting forth is basically the same that's already there. It's really, the changes are minor, are minor, except the only fifty-five, I think, is the only one. Everything else is still the same.
That's actually not in the zoning at all. That's just, it was Martin's Landing's choice to be a fifty-five plus. It's not part of the zoning. So that does not change anything about the game.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It doesn't change at all what's gone on over there. So there wouldn't be any reason to make any changes then, even if it came about. Okay, nothing so much stands, and we've kept you guys up too late tonight, so.
We're used to it. They're thoroughly.
Yeah, it's a thoroughly for you guys. It's thoroughly for them.
Yeah, we're going to tune up. We should have another couple hours. Can I just make a suggestion? Since we are having the public hearing on the zoning article next week, um, we do need to include this time a written report to town meeting because twenty-one days will not elapse between our. Public hearing on the zoning amendment and town meeting. Usually we are outside the twenty-one day window. All that means is that the planning board has to give a written report of some kind to town meeting. So because we'll be preparing a written report, if you all want to think about some things, he would like to include in that, and you can just discuss it, and then I can come up with a draft for you to look at over.
It was a lot.
I've got some ten seconds left of Rose Day in the resume board. I don't want to jinx them.
Talk about a hail Mary.
Yeah, really, yeah.
Nice.
Um, so Danielle, I, I, um. I, I, if we're going to do a report, I'm not adverse to putting a couple of, uh. Questions in it about what could happen in the future. But I do think, um, unless it's about a serious objection, I would like to keep it as positive as possible. Because I really think that that's our best, our best bet, is to, is to, um. Let this zoning go forward. And that'll buy us time, and if it doesn't hurt us, it could help us. Yeah, the other way around could hurt us and not help us.
I think that you have to respect. People and the voters and just be honest. And there are some negatives, and I think the report should have.
A lot of stuff?
Yeah, just covering. But we'll know, you said stay positive, and I think there's.
Before that, no, I said, I know there's some negative things.
Well, you said, I know, but then the report should be positive. I'm just saying, clarifying that the report should contain the negative and the positive. And I'm okay with a recommendation myself, you know, to vote on it, but I know there's other people here, and Jeff to my right wants to, you know. See what happens with the rest of these town. Well, I'm, I'm speaking, I'm not, I don't mean to speak for you, Jeff, and you have your text, but I just, I do get where. The other position here, you know? I mean, again, I'm on record April nine, voting for this to move into, so I mean.
Right.
You know, we've said a lot here today because we're trying to hash things out, but I've already made this decision, you know?
So basically, Jeff, I was going to say, if you had, if you had one or two points you would like to put in, if you want to provide Danielle with it, and so we'll include, I will include it in the report.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay?
That's like, give it to.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, he's going to take care of that, though. You didn't have to say anything.
He's good with that. Yes.
No, he was going to take that negative, you know, certainly. I was going to have feelings.
What do you think, Max?
I have a blast.
No. I think we'll all try to do the best we can, the right thing. That's, that's, uh.
Yeah, we're just both pieces for. People tapping you on the shoulder as you walk around from meeting to meeting and giving you feedback. And so I'm just, I'm just a composite of all that. Um, it's not all my opinion. It's. I'm relaying what I'm hearing, so. I think everyone, I encourage everyone to get educated on it and to, to Joyce, Joyce Wells' point. Um, and thank Joyce for spending all his time, your personal time, we have to hear, um, is. You know, people do need to get educated so that the, the fear stuff is wrong. I mean, the, the seven hundred and eighty units or whatever having to be built, that stuff should be squashed. And we all need to do a better job making sure people understand that. But the other stuff we brought up, these are rare, very rare, real, you know, real questions. So.
Go ahead, Jeff.
The wrong with it. My, my thing is, is that I don't think anybody is making a fear mongering. I think the people that are on this board and the people in this room actually care, and that's why we're talking about.
Right, yeah.
So to, to say that.
I was referring to the, the, you know, people that Joyce mentioned out there, not in this room, but they're just coming up with comments.
Right. And I don't think that's, I don't think that's the case. I don't, I don't think that, um. Fear mongering is a good word. I just don't. I, I think it's like, you know what? I sit on this board and I really, I really try very hard to understand everything and, and know that the decisions we make. Are going to affect the future. That's it. And I listen, you know, we listen to the people. We, we try to, you know, figure out the best way to do things for the town, because we, we all love the town. We all live here, but. To, to fear monger is, is not what this is about. This is about putting all the cards on the table from all different angles and listening and understanding and trying to. To, to sift through this whole thing so that the people will ultimately make a good decision. That's what this is all about. That's all I can say.
Yeah, that's, I, I agree with that, too. It's all about making a good decision.
And thank you.
Can I just say that the state website, mass.gov, says North Reading, seven hundred and fifty units. So that's where people are getting this from. I mean, not everybody.
Hail Mary. That's a good point.
So, you know, when I say that, that, that's what I'm reading on mass.gov.
Well, that's the way they brought it up, that that's the one thing we identified as a sticking point that we need to educate people on.
You're right. I've seen that spreadsheet with, it has all the different towns in the company. Yeah, that can be misleading.
Right. People don't understand. It means we have to zone for seven, say seven, that it doesn't mean we have to build seventy on top of what's already zoned for. What's zoned for, what's our permanent already is nine.
It's yours. And shirts being made that have the slide there that gives the breakdown, you know. Be wearing them around the next four weeks.
All right, if there's no more questions or comments, then we will close this meeting. You are set, Danielle.
I am. I did want to remind you about the hearing for next week on the twenty-first. Um, it's never come up before because we've never quite been close in recommendations to town meeting, but we can't have a tie vote for recommendation. Yes or no to town meeting. It has to be. A majority vote of one time or another. So we have to make sure everyone's in attendance next, next meeting, or we're not going to be able to have a, a vote that will. That will allow, if we don't have a, a positive or a negative vote, then town meeting on a recommendation, town meeting will not be able to. That's what we have to do. So everybody, please do your best to attend and come with me, please.
Will do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm confident that we'll work on, work something out, and we'll try to work towards a good, good solution.
Thanks, Danielle.
Welcome to the meeting. Thanks, guys.
Okay, uh, chairman's for our end, unless everybody wants to go around and I'll close this, this hearing, please, maybe, okay?
Okay.